Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 7:00 PM and I call the meeting of the Westland City Council to order. I invite you to stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance led this today by Councilwoman Sampe.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Councilman Gabow.
Present.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Here.
Councilwoman McDermott.
Here.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Present.
Pro Tem Rakowsky.
Present.
President Hart is absent, excused. There is a quorum.
All right, thank you Clerk. This evening we have a number of presentations and we're going to get started with our Facilities Director Vic Barra and the Compassionate City Committee.
I know we didn't have any Compassionate City Committee presentations in January. The students fortunately had a little bit more of a break than a lot of us after the holidays, so traditionally moving forward, we're not going to be doing them in January, but it's 2023 and it's time to get this process started again. I'd like to invite up Mr. Darryl Beebe and Amanda Divas from the Wayne Westland Community School District to tell us about our wonderful students today. So here you go, Darryl.
Thank you. All right, come on up here. Well, we're excited to be back and we have two great students that we're going to recognize on tonight, and we're going to get right into it with Brandon Britton. Brandon is accompanied by our principal, his principal Cory Gildersleeve, as well as John Ross, the instructional coach and technology advisor. And so Brandon's act of kindness, Brandon participates in our unified basketball team, that's our special needs basketball team, as a student coach. He has been a consistent presence for the team and the players look forward to seeing him. Brandon is being recognized for his kindness and volunteering his time to this unique program. So Brandon, we're going to ask that you come up as well as the principal, as well as the teacher. And Ma'am also, come on up, Ma'am.
And our next student is Lucas Downey. Lucas attends William D. Ford Career Technical Center and is accompanied this evening by social worker Diane Back, Principal Jacinda Sumara, and Teacher Dawn Wiggyhop. So we're going to ask you to come up in just a minute. Lucas's random act of kindness is that Lucas will help out with anything, from helping another student with an assignment to helping teaching staff. He helped bring down the carts to the lecture hall when his class had to move classrooms for a few days. Lucas is consistently nominated for Student of the Week for always going out of his way to be extra helpful in his auto body classroom. So round of applause for Lucas.
I have one of the mic on the way out.
All right, we'll wait for everybody to get up there, but we're not done yet. Council President or Council President Pro Tem Andrea Rakowsky and Mayor Londo have certificates for you, and then we're going to take a group photograph and then we can go out into the lobby and our photographer will take many more photographs of you so that you can share this event with your friends and family later.
All right, thank you, everybody, again, out in the lobby for additional photographs.
And students, keep up the good compassion at work. The world needs as much of that as we can get, so keep up the good work. Nice meeting all of you and thank you.
Thank you, Facilities Director. All right. Onto our next presentation, I invite Maryam Katie, who represents Relay for Life Westland Wayne.
Hello there, thank you for the welcome there and thank you so much, Mayor and City Council and everyone that is up here that's always so welcoming when I come to talk about Relay. So it's hard to believe another year of Relay is kicking off. It's 2023 kickoff. So this Thursday on the ninth, we are going to be here at City Hall kicking it off and gonna, we'll divulge our theme, that's when we usually divulge our theme at our kickoff. So everyone is welcome. It starts at 6:30, like I said, it's at City Hall, and you'll find out more about if you'd like to join, if you just want to come, you know, if you want to start a team, anything, a sponsorship, anything that you would like to do moving forward for the rest of the year, we always welcome and appreciate you. So I will leave flyers out at the front and if you have any questions, I'm also available, but I'm going to give you our website. And like I said, always welcome and look forward to so many things coming up, fundraisers, our meetings that everyone's welcome to in our event in June. So thank you so much again for having me.
Thank you, Maryam. Okay, now I'd like to invite our Westland Professional Firefighters Association to our podium.
Oh, you're too kind. Hello, everyone. Good evening, Council. Mr. Mayor, congratulations. Congratulations, Chief Stamper. I'm here, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to shed some light on some of the amazing work your firefighters are doing, other than responding to the ever escalating number of calls with everything from false alarms and lift assist to cardiac arrest and structured fires. We do a number of charitable events and raise a ridiculous amount of money throughout the year to put back into the community. The amount of runs does not include the countless number of man hours that our Fire Marshal Division puts in inspecting buildings, new and old, making sure that they are safe, as safe as they can be from fire, which makes it safer for me to do my job, making a burning building a little bit less dangerous. As firefighters, we don't seek the spotlight. We prefer to take care of our business professionally and return to our stations with little fanfare controversy. But at times, as a leader, it becomes necessary to heap praise on those who take care of business and make things happen. While I am definitely not the station commander, a shift boss, and for sure, not the chief, I do take great pride in leading the Westland Professional Firefighters Local 1279 Charity Fund. I've been chairman for a while, and again, we've done some amazing things. Just a small list in no specific order. The big, big event for us historically has been our Firefighters Charity Ball. We started that event 10 years ago after the loss of Brian Wolke in fighting a commercial fire, raising well over $100,000, I would say, in the last 10 years. That money has helped us support his family. It has also helped us create an endowment fund, which gives scholarships through Schoolcraft College to people, young people interested in joining the service and providing service to their community. Our golf outing, which some of you have attended, is another one, fun, a little bit crazy at times, but again, it helps us raise money that we're able to put back into the community. Another large one for us, again, I got to praise the Fire Marshals Union or Division. They have over the last five years raised upwards of $65,000 at their flash fire raffle at the Bova. Thanks to the VFW for donating that venue for a number of events, helps us raise more money. The money they've raised over the years has helped them provide motorized wheelchairs and scooters for those in need, including veterans, wheelchair lifts, wheelchair ramps. They have helped over 50 businesses become compliant or assisted them with purchasing fire protection equipment, again, keeping their business safe, keeping me safe. So congratulations to them for a job well done over the last five years. All of the monies raised in those events that we've done help us do things like providing Thanksgiving dinner for six families, providing Christmas presents and Christmas dinners for half a dozen families this year, delivered in the fire truck, of course. I think the kids care more about the fire truck than the presents sometimes. We have also created a number of scholarships in the name of our fallen brothers, the Todd Stanaway Scholarship, Bobby Bowles Scholarship, and again, Brian Wolke. I want to say there's another $6,000 in scholarships that we give out a year, again, to kids that apply for them, they have to write an essay, and we have a committee that judges those essays. Let's see, what else we got? And one that's near and dear to my heart, I've been in the fire service for almost 23 years now, and I've been happily collecting money at the intersections once a year for MDA. We have probably raised in the last seven year, seven years, over $100,000. That money goes to the research and development of medications to cure muscle diseases, both kids and adults, and I've seen firsthand attending bootcamps and summer camps with kids who were in wheelchairs one year and one or two years later, they were walking and/or running without assistance, pretty amazing to see. Some of the young guys I've taken to those bootcamps who had little to no experience with charitable efforts, let alone dealing with handicapped children, were blown away by how happy and the benefits of the money that we've raised over the years. So those are just a few things that we've done over the last year, well, we do annually, And I want to thank the community because without the support of local businesses, political figures as yourselves, political or community organizations such as Bova, VFW, or Vic, Wayne Fort Civic League is a huge, huge, huge help for us. It allows us to give back to the community in great ways. So I just want to let you guys know, more importantly, the community know, that your firefighters are out there, they're doing things. Again, we don't ask for thanks, we don't look for praise, we like to take care of business, get back to the firehouse, and hopefully catch a little bit of sleep at night, so thank you guys so much.
Thank you. All right, we are now on to a presentation from State Representative Coleman.
Thank you, City Council. Thank you, City Councilwoman, President Pro Tem Rakowsky. It's nice to see you chairing the meeting tonight.
Thank you.
A fresh face there, sometimes it's a nice thing to see. I just wanted to come by and share a little bit of important news from Lansing for everybody, and it's actually, I'm really pleased to announce that it's something we've been working on for over five years now, since I was first elected as State Representative. We are repealing the retirement tax, finally. It's something that should have never taken place in the first place, and it, after the governor signs this and it's phased in over the next couple of years, we're going to see over half a million senior families in Michigan save over $1,000 per family. So that's something I'm really, really pleased to share with you. It's something that I think I was probably more excited about than probably any other bill I passed in Lansing over the last few years, so I'm just really ecstatic to share that. I also want to share that we are increasing the, it used to be called the Earned Income Tax Credit, now it's going to be called the Working Families Tax Credit. We're going to be expanding that out to 700,000 Michiganders, people who are on the lower side of the income, but they're working full-time, they're working hard to provide for their families. It's going to put an average of over $3,100 back in their pockets after filing taxes. So I'm excited to just share that we're putting money back in people's pockets. You know, government, you know, we tend to think government is taking your money, it's nice to see government give you a little bit of money back, so especially during these times where costs are high, I think it's, it's just exciting to be able to bring a little money back in that way. So I wanted to share that, there's a couple other things in the works, but I'll wait till they're a little more solid before I share them, I'll come back and see you hopefully soon. I also want to plug our coffee hours, they're always the second Monday of every month at 9:00 AM at the Inspire Theater over on Warren Road in Westland. So that's with Commissioner Anderson and I, Anderson from Wayne County and I, again, 9:00 AM this coming Monday. So if you want to come out and get some more details about what we're working on, we invite you to come out. The phone number for our office is 517-373-2275. So that's 517-373-2275. Our email, kevincoleman@house.me.gov. My cell phone, if you want to give me a call, I always give this out, I really like to get feedback, whether it's from council members, people in the audience, or anybody at home. My cell phone, 734-751-6321. And lastly, I just want to shout out Bishop Don W. Shelby Jr. of Burning Bush Ministries. He's the leader, the leading pastor over there, and he actually had a huge accomplishment this week. He got the Presidential Lifetime Achievement Award from our U.S. President, so I just wanted to shout him out, thank you for everything you've done for our community. Thank you, good night.
Thank you, Representative Coleman. All right, lastly, but certainly not least, is State Representative Wiegala?
Wiegala, yeah, you got it, which is rare, because the clerk of the house is still learning it. I just wanted to come by, I know Rep. Coleman explained some of the things going on in Lansing, so I'll keep mine brief and just want to kind of introduce myself. So this is my first term, I'll be representing District 26. I live in Garden City, so District 26 is Garden City, southeast Westland, basically if you take Wayne Road and Cherry Hill, the southeast portion of Westland from there is the easiest way to describe what portion of Westland I have in my district, Inkster and then southeast or northeast Romulus. Wanted to come by and just, you know, most people on Council, I've had an opportunity to speak to at some point or another, some of your doors I got to knock on, which was great, but my door's always open and I look forward to reaching out to each of you to sit down and discuss what are Westland's priorities. My background, I spent seven and a half years in education, I've taught in some capacity or another, grades kindergarten through 11th grade, I've taught in Michigan, Arizona, and South Korea, most recently just at Dearborn High. I have a labor background as well, I served for two years as my local teachers' union president, and you know, my committees that I was given in Lansing kind of reflect my background. I'll be serving on education, labor, elections, which I'm the vice chair of, ethics, and then military veterans and homeland security. The last thing I'll kind of put out there is very soon, everybody on Council and our mayor will be getting an email, my office is setting up a community advisory council, which I will be inviting council members and mayors from all four of my cities to kind of sit and make, build connections, organize together and kind of have a direct line to Lansing other than just these council meetings, we're looking to do that once a month. And lastly, I'll just leave this out there, you know, if there's any way to get connected to anybody, please feel free to reach out to me. I don't have my phone number, my office number memorized yet, like Rep. Coleman, but it's very easy, I am the only person in the world with my name, if you search it up, you will find me and be able to find out how to get in contact with me. So thank you for having me here and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. All right, so we'll now move on to questions or input on the agenda from the public. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, phrasal slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time, however, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the speaker is completed or their speaking time is exhausted, whichever is first. Is there someone from my right?
First one with all of the new people in new places, congratulations. Emily Bowman, resident of Westland. I actually have two things, questions I have actually on the consent calendar, so one of them is item D, I believe. I was just wondering if there was any possibility that anyone could speak a little bit about what the officer will be doing at John Glenn. It was, I was really curious, I was really interested in what's happening and what he or she will be doing at John Glenn, and what will it mean to be a counselor liaison and a positive, a counselor liaison and positive role model? I'd like to kind of expand on that a little bit to understand that, very curious. And then item H, and again, this may, this may be a preliminary question, but what will the transition from Code Red to NICSOL actually look like for the city and for residents? You know, some of us are, do get text messages from NICSOL and things like that when things happen, and can you just speak to some of the key differences? I don't know if someone can speak to the key differences between the two of them. I did some, I did some reading on some of it, but I think to share to all the city people about what that means to go from one to the other, because I think that's, it could seem like a big switch. So those are my two questions. Thanks.
Is there anyone on my left? Is there, oh, didn't see your hand.
Okay, I'm a Westland resident, and I just had a question because I can't seem to get any answers for one of my neighbors. I've been a Westland, my family's been here for maybe 70 years in the city of Westland at Annapolis Park, and one of the neighbors that's in Annapolis Park, she's a renter, and she's having problems with her home. She has her, the person who, the person who owns the home, he's renting it out to her, he has never done anything to her house.
Okay, this, this period, I'm going to stop the clock, this period of time is for items that are on the agenda.
Oh, just on the agenda, okay.
You'll have an opportunity at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
And we'll make sure that somebody from the administration can connect with you as well to get some of that information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm in the timer. Mr. Clausen.
I'd be glad to meet with her now to get her address and information.
That would be fantastic.
And pass it on to administration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Seeing no more comments, we will have public comment closed. And move to the consent. And move to the consent calendar. Thank you. Is there a motion? Is there, thank you, sorry. All right. Is there any changes that need to be made around the consent calendar?
Who is the supporter?
Melissa Sampe.
Thank you.
Is there any changes to the consent calendar? Now, we did have two questions in regards to our consent calendar. The first one was consent item D in regards to the John Glenn High School Police Officer Liaison. If I may have Police Chief Jadruzik expound on that for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Pro Tem and through the chair. This is an extension of the existing contract we've had with the Wayne Westland School District for probably 20 years. This is the school resource officer that works in the school district. It's a shared partnership and a shared cost program with Wayne Westland Schools and the city of Westland. We both share the cost of that police officer that works out of the school, has an office in John Glenn High School, spends time in all the different schools, even though the school resource officer's main office is in John Glenn. He or she, currently our school resource officer's name's Officer Ryan D'Amico, he's assigned to an office in John Glenn High School and he follows up on the juvenile offenses that take place in the school, and he works closely with the youth assistance program and makes referrals over to that program also.
Thank you, Chief Jadruzik. Our second question is in regards to consent item H, the alerting system subscription Code Red and the transition, and if I could please have Director Brown discuss that.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem, through the chair. So this is something I'm actually pretty excited about. We've been using NICSOL for quite some time, and it's, it's worked for us, but we want something that's better for the residents. We want to reach out to more people, and we think that Code Red is going to provide us this opportunity. So in terms of the two questions, let's start with the features. So Code Red is a more robust platform for us, we'll be able to reach out to more residents, and we'll be able to do that not just through text and SMS messaging, but it'll actually send out voice calls to landlines, for example, so for seniors that don't have cell phones, they'll be able to get messaging now. We'll still have the email services also, so we're going to have additional features that way. A second additional feature is this actually is multilingual, so now instead of everything being sent in English, the people when they sign up for their account can choose what their primary language is going to be. So this is going to allow us to reach a lot more people. Going along those lines, it also allows us to focus the messaging to specific areas better. We can use geofencing, so we can, we can fence an area in the city and send a message directly targeted to those people. So like, for example, a water main break, we don't have to hit the entire city, we can just hit, say, the block that's impacted, God forbid. So it allows us a lot more flexibility in terms of the messaging that we send, and we can send it faster. So hopefully that answers the question about the additional features, not going to lie. In terms of the transition, I'm very cognitive of the need for messaging, I mean, this is not something like, you know, changing, you know, a couple of street signs, this is the emergency messaging for the city. So we are going to be running NICSOL at the same time that we're running Code Red for approximately six months, and during those times, we're going to be doing a mass marketing blitz on the city, letting people know across social media, through our cable letting people know across social media, through our cable stations, every which way we can that we have this new platform for people to sign up for. Along with that, Code Red actually sends out mass contact information to people with landlines. So they buy a bunch of marketing lists and they'll reach out and say, hey, city of Westland's got a new platform. You want to be part of it.
Thank you, Director Brown. Okay, with those questions answered and no changes being noted, is there any dissent? Is there any dissent? Seeing no dissent, the consent calendar is passed unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Minutes of the regular meeting held January 17, 2023. Minutes of the regular meeting held January 23, 2023. Approval of bid for the replacement of virtual servers for the Department of Innovation and Technology. Administration recommended the low bidder CDWG at a total cost not to exceed $82,802 and authorized the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney. Approval of agreement with the city of Westland and Wayne Westland Community Schools regarding the John Glenn High School Police Officer Liaison. The agreement shall be effective for a one-year period commencing immediately. Approval of golf cart leasing agreement with Pfeiffer Incorporated to provide the Mac Mayfield Golf Course with a total of 31 golf carts. The lease agreement is for three years. Cost of the golf carts is $685 each, which includes weekly upkeep and maintenance services. Approval of links at Gateway Golf Course Maintenance Contract Rate Adjustment for the 2023 season. Annual maintenance will increase from $155,000 to $167,000 and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney. Approval of aerial image service subscription renewal with NearMap US Incorporated for the Department of Innovation and Technology. Subscription renewal is for one year in the amount of $15,600. Approval of alerting system subscription with Code Red to alert residents of various time-sensitive emergencies. The subscription is for a one-year period in an amount not to exceed $7,300. Approval of request to reprogram certain CDBG CV funds. And the last item approved on the consent calendar, adoption of prepared resolution authorizing the acquisition of one parcel acquired under the CDBG Home Program for resale to eligible first-time home buyers and/or to remove blight and hold for future redevelopment in exchange for the resulting purpose. The parcel is located at 34013 Cambria Court. Acquisition and demolition costs $10,000. And the Department of Housing and Community Development is authorized to sign the closing documents on behalf of the city. Moving to approval of vouchers.
Do I have a motion?
Support.
All right, I have a motion by Councilman Hersberg and support from Councilmember Mike McDermott. Do you have any comment? Do you have any remarks? Do we have any dissent? Do we have any dissent? Seeing no dissent, the motion passes unanimously.
New business. Item one. Approval of professional services agreement with Higera Health Incorporated to perform social worker services for the Westland Police Department. Term of the agreement shall be effective immediately and will be valid through December 31, 2023 in the amount of $40 per compensable hour.
So moved. I have a motion from Councilwoman Sampe and support from Councilmember Hornbuckle. Okay. Chief Jedruzik, since this came from your department, the police department, would you mind speaking on it?
Sure. Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. I know city council is aware of this, but maybe for the residents that aren't. There was a national mass action lawsuit that took place against the pharmaceutical companies. As a result of that opioid lawsuit, that settlement is allowing the city the ability to fund this program. Last year at the police department, we hired and embedded mental health, social worker to work out of our police department. It's been a huge success. The social workers responded to over 400 different calls and she's been co responding to calls with our police officers. So similar to that program, we're going to move into this program with a substance use disorder counselor. It's a counselor we're going to be contracting with through Higera Health. The idea and the purpose behind this program is this counselor is going to work out of the police department, is going to provide assistance not only to the police department, but also to the fire department when they come across people with need and also the Westland Youth Assistance Program when they come across people with need. Data shows that many crimes are committed as a result of drug use. What we're going to do is we need to be able to get these people immediate treatment and help when they're having their moment of clarity, which is usually when they're in our police custody. So we're going to be able to have this counselor help get them their help. Also going to be able to provide resources to their families to help them get help or even just to the community in general when they call. We're going to push out information later on how the community can get ahold of this person. And really what it comes down to is we've learned that over the years, we can't arrest our way out of drug crime problems. You know, we have to find ways to get these people the help and the resources they need. So we're really excited about this program. We think it's going to be a huge resource for the city of Westland and our neighboring communities also.
Thank you so much, Chief Jedruzik. Do we have a discussion from the maker?
Now, I just wanted to say thank you, chief, for bringing this forward to us because I also agree. I mean, mental health is so important and this is just an extension of what we're doing here in our community. So I'm just elated that we can hopefully pass this this evening and continue to support you and your efforts in the community. So thank you.
Do we have any comments from the support?
I just want to echo what Councilwoman mentioned. I do think this is the right step. The city can use, you know, set the example for other cities around us as well. So I do definitely support this and like this idea.
Is there any other discussion? Any? Oh, thank you. Councilman McDermott.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pro Tem. So thank you to the Westland Police Department Chief Jedruzik for really spearheading this, not only with this initiative for the substance use disorder council, but for the previous initiatives they've taken on the social worker that we hired last year to embed in the police department, but also to the domestic violence advocate. Having this kind of crisis prevention, mental health prevention team, and treating drug abuse as the public health crisis that it is, not a criminal crisis, is really important. We're helping to break down barriers and end the stigma around drug use and we're getting people, most importantly, the help and treatment they need. So I really want to thank Chief Jedruzik and his proactive leadership on this and the entire PD for supporting this. So thank you. I think this is going to be a really important program. And as Councilwoman Sampe said, we're going to be, you know, a leader around Metro Detroit for not only having our first, but our second social worker and having a domestic violence advocate. So thank you to all the work in the PD and I look forward to, very much looking forward to supporting this. Thank you.
I think we have a general consensus, but I must ask, is there any dissent? Is there any dissent? Seeing no dissent, the motion passes. All right, now we are off to public comment. Please regard the paragraph that I read earlier about how we ask each other to maintain a professional decorum when addressing the council. I'm going to start on the opposite side this evening. Is there anyone on my left? Please.
Arthur Warren, president of the Southeast Westland Homeowners Association. A lot of times I come up here with a lot of criticism, but this time I come up with a lot of thanks. Over the past period, the Southeast section has been experiencing a lot of blackouts, a lack of electricity, and it was due to a lot of trees in the lines. Okay? We reached out to our state rep, Kevin Coleman here, and our councilman James Godbout and our previous mayor, and tried to get, put some pressure on DTE. And believe it or not, they were resistant. They wouldn't talk to the homeowners association. But finally, they came through and started the tree trimming process. And you see those commercials on TV. So you have to thank the the community of the Southeast Westland Homeowners Association and Representative Kevin Coleman and Godbout who brought us the good news. So it is a good thing that is happening in our community. And like I say, it's also benefited Inkster, Garden City with those questions of tree trimming because they had us on a two or four-year waiting list. And so it has been moved up. And so now pretty much our lights will be on for good. Thanks again, Jim, for bringing us the news. Also, another thing that I want to, if I can have this, is Councilman Hersberg. I need a little 15 minutes with you after the council meeting to discuss a particular issue. And then hopefully we can resolve it. So what I won't have to talk about here at the podium. Are you in favor?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone on my right?
I wanted to say hello, everybody, and Ray with updates. That's what I'm doing. And listening to the, and I do support the Westland Police Department and I am very happy to hear about this extra social worker with drug abuse. That is, we want to get to that point where you just don't want to just keep them locked up in jail like that. Give them some help. And I am real passionate about mental health and I'm glad you brought that up, about mental health, because I will stand behind mental health. Because, mental health, because, you know, sometimes people wait till it's too late. If you catch it in time, you can help it. You can help the person out. Wesley with that crisis line, 9-8-8 number they have out there right now. And I'm really, I've been promoting it too. So I've kind of been branching on my own as mental health. And I am the mental health ambassador and I wear many hats. And also I wrote some notes down tonight is, last month, I trained. Let's talk about training 10 peer mentors in Wisconsin on Zoom. It was three of us that trained them and they were eager and beaver and they want to start a program like we do out here in Wayne County. And Oakland County has peer mentoring services and helping people out that we support. And I'm one of the leaders of it and I love what I do. And also, I heard about the fire department giving up updates tonight for the, that was really good updates too, you know, reaching out in the community. I'm going to be reaching out to the community with this. That means that it's not this here in Westland. I am going to Livonia, Dearborn Heights, Dearborn in the month of March disability awareness. I am going to make a big awareness about people with different abilities because diversity falls into this. Diversity is, I'm coming on that February 9th. And that is really good information. And diversity to me, I am a diversity person, people's rights. People should be treated with dignity and respect everywhere we go and they should be treated with dignity and respect, even if they go into businesses. They're not treated right. They shouldn't go there. That's right. It's just like, you know, anybody else. So, and our next meeting is coming up this month, our disability advocacy group, and I'm very proud of that advocacy. And I'm taking this advocacy and I'm going to drive it up there, even to Lansing, walk a mile in my shoes because it's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone on my left? Ms. Wilson.
Hello, council, fire, police, mayor. I just want to wish my mother a happy 93rd birthday. She turned 93 on January 20.
Happy birthday. All right, you changed sides, so. All right, sir.
Working the system. Paul Weisberger on behalf of LJ Holdings. I was here before you guys a few months ago. This is regarding a cannabis multi-building project on Cherry Hill Road, northwest corner of Cherry Hill and Newburgh. We started this project, seems like an eternity ago, and I know it does to you as well. The project, when we submitted it, was part of a application process. We scored 92 points out of 100 and that put us into a second place tie with seven other people. We were selected not by merit at that point, but by essentially a lottery ticket draw of the hat. Our buildings were fairly substantial. This is back when our product cannabis was being sold at $3,000 to $3,500 a pound. That price has precipitously dropped in the last year and a half, down to around $800 to $900 a pound. We've been told with meetings with Mo and the ex-mayor that although our scoring and what gave us the 92 points was not based on the size of our buildings, that if we were to come back and show smaller buildings because of the economic change in our industry, it would not, it would not happen. So we pushed forward and since that meeting about eight months ago, prices even further have dropped. So the impact, the timing of this also, we've got a minute 26. The timing of this was drawn out by a lawsuit that was involved. It was also drawn out by wetlands that we had on the project. We are no longer in a position where we wish to build, grow buildings and put ourselves in financial ruin. With the limited time I have left, I will tell you that the facility that we're proposing to grow would produce about 3,000 pounds. The average price now on a good day is $900 a pound. The cost to grow that pound is about $600 a pound. That's before you amortize in the five to five and a half million dollars of capital that's required to build this building. When you amortize that, whether you do it five years or 10 years, if you do it over five years, it gives you a miniscule profit of about $33 a pound. And if you do it over five years, because it's a volatile business, that's what most people would say you would do, it puts us at a loss of about $134 to $34 a pound, depending on what the price range is for marijuana at the time. So why are we here? We're here because we've submitted all the engineering plans, we've done all the easements, we've got requests to pay the city about $200,000 to $250,000 in fees to get an opportunity to hope that we can get things done by March 15th. What we're simply asking for is to be able to phase the project, build the building up front, and then hire an industrial broker and build the buildings in the back so they don't lie there fallow and take this property from a vacant piece of property into something that produces taxes for the city.
Thank you, sir. That's your time.
Thank you.
All right. So since he went over there, we're going to come back to the side. Do I have anybody on my right? Okay.
Good evening, council. My name is Ron Sasek, 32-year resident of Westland. This is going to be a little bit different. I was here last month when the new mayor, I will call acting mayor, was installed. I'm concerned about the republics. We take the pledge of allegiance to begin the meeting. Why do we all always hear that our government is a democracy? I hope you understand that the federal government is a republic, the state government is a republic, the county government is a republic, and this locality of the city of Westland is a republic. Now, what does that mean to you? Rhetorically, are you a de jure officer occupying a de jure office? If you can raise your hand and say yes, I would ask you, what does that mean to you? I seen a lot of form last week, not much substance. Clerk LeBlanc, you weren't quite transparent with me when I came to you and asked you about the installation of a new mayor, but that's not my point today.
How's that?
You said that the attorney was going to say what was going, how it was going to proceed.
I didn't say that.
Yes, you did to me. So again, like I said, I'm going to drop that now. My point of the fact is that if we don't operate as a republic, actions are null and void. If you don't know what a de jure officer is, maybe you should have your city attorney explain it to you. But I can too, but it'll take too long. My point of the fact is, last month, I witnessed a hug fest. Clerk LeBlanc, when Mayor Wild resigned, was his resignation submitted on paper?
Yes.
Was it notarized?
No.
What did he, what did he put down for his explanation to resign?
If you'd like to make a list of questions.
This is my last one on this issue.
I'll certainly respond to this.
This is the last one on this issue. Did he say why he was resigning?
As I said, make a list.
No, I would like to have you answer just one more question. This is where the lack of transparency comes in. My point of the fact is, the councilmen and councilwomen that then were nominated My point of the fact is, the councilmen that, and councilwomen that then were nominated to then have a vote on to be mayor, did you resign your office as councilman or councilwoman? Councilman, how do you pronounce your name, Acting Mayor? Last name, please. Londo?
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me?
Last name?
I'm a councilman, so I didn't, I didn't quite hear your...
Your last name, please?
I missed your question.
Can you pronounce your name for me?
Londo.
Londo. Did you resign from the, your councilman term before you then submitted to be voted on for mayor? No, he did not. You cannot hold two offices at the same time.
Okay, sir, that's your time.
That's three minutes?
That's three minutes, you're going over as we speak.
I'll be back next time, and I appreciate your indulgence with me, but we got to follow the rule of law. Without the rule of law, we have nothing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do I have anybody on my left?
Yes, I'm Deanna Statow, and I'm the chairperson of the Compassionate City. And just as Vic Vera said, we were not meeting for January. But Mayor Lindau, Council Chiefs, I also would like to congratulate the students as well, their parents, for doing such a wonderful job, and the teachers for being so aware of the fact that they do have these outstanding students that are, should be recognized, and even the ones that need to be encouraged are, it's so important to be able to see them and say, "Thank you for being so thoughtful," and that's just so important. And I'd also like to note, too, now, we're just going into our second year of the Compassionate City and reaching out to not only the students, but adults as well. So we have compassionatewestland.com if you're interested in submitting someone's name. And even if they would not like to come up in front of council, we would like to at least acknowledge them with a letter or a certificate in the mail, and that would be fine, too, just to say, "Thank you very much for being so thoughtful." And we do appreciate it, all of our citizens for Westland. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on my right?
My name is Jody White, and, congratulations. I, I do a lot of legislative, I go to the committee meetings in Lansing. And we're anxious, I'm excited to know that he's part of the election committee. We've been doing, I'm part of a team that we're collecting the data, and we're contacting our city clerks in Oakland and Wayne County is the teams that I'm working with. And I want to thank Mr. LeBlanc, because it's shocking how in Oakland County, they charge us a whole lot of money for a lot of stuff that Livonia gives for free, and Richard LeBlanc gives us for $5. So I don't know why we have to pay $15 and $60 in Oakland, in Oakland County, and more, because I have quite a few of the jurisdictions that we've been getting. And what's happening is, we are looking at files and making sure that the numbers match. As everybody knows, I ran for city clerk back in 2014. I did not get the job, but I do feel that there should be a point where you know your vote has been casted, and you know that it counted. And we don't want any mishaps. And we're finding minor discrepancies. To me, 216 votes in a city that's really large is not a lot. But if that was your vote that was missing, you might be a little annoyed. So, Ms. LeBlanc, I just really want to thank you and Livonia, because I'm doing the Senate 5 district, which is where I also ran for senate. So I, I like my city council, or my city clerks in Senate 5 district, and I just want to help prove that we have the best clerks in Senate 5 district. And then, in the meantime, I would like to continue to introduce myself to the election gentleman here, because when we go to the committee meetings, a lot of times, we go up there, we drive to Lansing, we take an hour and a half to get there, and then the committee people don't let us have an opportunity to speak. And it's hard enough only being able to speak for three minutes, let alone driving an hour and a half and being disrespected and not being able to speak. I'm very active in the Judiciary Committee. There is some harm going on in our courts, and we are being abused in the probate court. So I'm telling all of our seniors to please get your assets together. Your assets can be stolen, Mr. Coleman. I've talked with him over the years. When I ran for state rep, him and I were working with an elder abuse. We met with Tim Gilbert, and we still haven't gotten anywhere with it. And it's just scary, because more and more victims are still coming up. And I know you guys are trying to help at the council level, but at the state level, we are just expecting, in the republic for which we stand, a lot of these people that are in their de jure position, which I can't believe you used that word, but I'm using it too, that they do their job. And we appreciate all the hard work that you guys do, because you're paid well. And we just would like to not feel that we're being threatening or that you give us our lecture about how we're supposed to speak. But yet, we go and we get treated with disrespect as humans that care. So again, thank you and congratulations, Mr. Londo.
Thank you. Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right?
Good evening again, Emily Bowman. I just, I actually just want to talk about the study session that was recently had. I thought it was, I enjoy going to the study sessions, I'm glad you guys have them. We actually filled up that room over there. I really had, was hoping, I was actually really hoping that there was going to be a reason that you guys are going to have to come out of there and come in here. So there's an element that I want to encourage residents, more residents, to come to these study sessions, because they're amazing. I also would love to encourage, and I know Councilman Hart's not here, but I'd like to encourage some sort of a regular schedule for people. I think there was a request of that, some, because it is, I understand that they get scheduled like that, maybe a week or two in advance. But if there could be some sort of a regular schedule of the count, of the study session that people could know, okay, I know I'm coming every other week, or twice a week, twice a month for council, but those study sessions are really important. This last one was an audit, and so it was, it was where you got to hear. And I've never, I've never been to a city council audit, like the city audit. And I thought, I've been to many audits for businesses, but the city one, to see where the money's coming from to be able to pay, you know, from the residents, where, where is, where are those taxes? Where are they coming from? And the property tax was the hugest area, which means that everyone who has a house, who pays anything to resident, to property tax in the city of Westland, that's the biggest chunk of money that's getting decided and spent. And I think more residents need to be knowing about that and coming to those. So even if those study sessions had some ability to be regular, so people could count on them and get them on their schedule and be coming and go to them, I think that would make a such a big difference. Because I know you, you ask for people, our state reps ask for people, you always ask for people to say something. And we, we talk about, you know, the republic and the people being the, being the government, we're hiring you. Well, we've got to be there. And, but, but we also need to know when we need to be there. So I guess that's going to be my encouragement. It was a great study session, I, I do enjoy going to them. I mean, I may be, some people say I'm a geek, but, you know, I do enjoy going to them and being involved, and I love to have my opportunity to speak as well. But again, that's my encouragement, so, and I want to encourage people, I think the minutes are out there, and take a look, and, in fact, I think you record, do you record the study sessions?
I do.
You do? No? Okay, studies are not recorded, okay, so they're not available.
I meant, did I, I apologize, record the minutes?
No, no, of course, that's, okay, they don't get recorded. So council, council meetings do, but study sessions don't. So that's another reason why people really need to try to come to those. So that's me, my encouragement, thank you.
Thank you. Again, anyone on the left? Anyone on the right? Seeing no, no more public comment, we're going to move on to comments from the mayor's office.
Thank you, Council President Protam. Great job running the meeting night, good seeing everyone tonight, everyone at watching at home. It'll be rather lengthy tonight, we had about three weeks in between council meetings, so we've got a lot to talk about tonight. Thank you again for everybody that spoke tonight. Thank you to firefighters in the audience and for speaking on behalf of the charity. You guys do an incredible job with that. I try to support as much as I can with the MDA, with the Fire Administration Flash Fire Event, to the golf outings. Not a good golfer, but I try to support when I can, but I appreciate you guys always reaching out and for doing all you do for the community. So it's been a busy three weeks, Council. I want to talk about some of the things that we've done. So I met with our staff, we had a very, very energetic and collaborative staff meeting. I laid out my expectations, also shared ideas and how we can, and asked for their opinion on how we can share ideas to, to better serve the Westland residents. I've met or had phone calls with Senator Stabenow, Senator Peters, Congresswoman Talib, Senator Polhanke, Wayne County Executive Warren Evans, our new council leadership team, our new council member, Councilman Hornbuckle, Dr. Dingnan, the superintendent of Wayne Westland Community Schools. I also look forward to continued partnerships at all levels of government to bring much-needed resources to Westland. In the coming weeks, I'll be meeting with Sheriff Washington and the Conference of Western Wayne as well. I believe Representative Wiegala and I will be meeting as well. Thank you for bringing up the study session, I thought it was also, it was great. We talked about the remaining ARP allocation, the fiscal year 2022 audit results, as well as the second quarter budget amendments. As you stated, it was well-attended, and I thought the dialogue was really, really well. With the recent bout of cold weather, I ordered or opened up warming centers throughout the city to keep our residents warm. We'll continue to do so whenever the temps fall below a certain temperature. We had a recent snowstorm, I know it feels like three weeks ago, it was three weeks ago. Department of Public Service handled that storm efficiently and effectively. I want to thank all of our, thank everybody involved for addressing the snowstorm, they did a great job. We got a lot of great feedback from the residents. Also, many people may know, I announced five new initiatives aimed at enhancing the quality of life for residents and visitors of Westland. I'll go through those briefly. Initiative number one is, we're bringing back leaf pickup by the fall of 2023. The city's going to implement a leaf pickup program at no additional cost to the residents of Westland. It's something people have been asking for for many, many years, and we're bringing it back this year. We're going to streamline our bulk pickup process. The city's looking to upgrade and streamline its bulk trash pickup process in order to make it more customer-friendly and simpler to navigate. The Neighborhood Makeover Program 2.0, since the original planned five-year cycle, the Neighborhood Makeover Program has been completed. We will be implementing a new phase addressing any and all deficient or hazardous sidewalks in Westland in the neighborhoods. Once completed, we'll begin the process of replacing, repairing, any problem areas at no cost to homeowners. To give folks an idea of how many sidewalks are in our community, we have over 300 miles of sidewalk in our community, so there are some dangerous areas, we're going to address those immediately. The Westland Shopping Center, the city is looking to establish a task force within the administration to explore the possibility of purchasing the Westland Shopping Center. Last one, the Ford Road Corridor. We've had many talks and many studies along Ford Road for the former City Hall and Baylee Recreation Center site. We're looking to explore any and all opportunities for a recreational complex to be constructed along Ford Rose, Ford Road, excuse me. Many of you know, we had, we had talks with many different stakeholders to place a recreation center at the former Marshall Upper Elementary School on Bayview. Those talks, it just wasn't financially feasible for the city of Westland, and I applaud the former administration and my colleagues on council for not moving forward with that project. Council, I know you're aware and residents are aware, we had a tragic incident of a 15-year-old, young John Glenn student over on Marquette and Newburgh Road at the intersection. I want to give you an update on some of the steps we've taken to correct the issues at that intersection. We've engaged with the county to install pedestrian crossing signals. The city should receive a timeline for installation this week. The pedestrian signals will be programmed with the existing traffic signals. Our DPS created pedestrian crossing signals that are now there, that will have flashing lights at the intersection moving, moving forward. You might be able to see them on a screen here, and the folks that are at home that are watching. So these are some of the visuals you'll be seeing at Ford, excuse me, Newburgh and Marquette. So there's your flashing symbols on the left, and then we're going to be implementing the, I like to call it the piano, piano-stripe sidewalk, but they're calling it ladder markings. This will be done immediately once the weather breaks. It's going to provide some additional caution to drivers in the area. I'm challenging them also to look at this citywide, to see what we can do to keep our, obviously, our most dangerous intersections, and then our, our school districts for sure, and then see what the cost is to do it citywide as well. We're also have, we're also going to have, I've installed, excuse me, I've instructed DTE to add an additional street light to the corner of, southeast corner of Marquette and Newburgh as well. And while this was a tragic accident that impacted many members in the community, I do have some great news to announce. The young lady is going to be released, she's scheduled to be released from the hospital on February 23rd, so that's fantastic news. Her mother's been in constant contact with the administration and our police department, so I appreciate the police department for their compassion and reaching out to them. She's very happy to hear the improvements at that intersection. A couple more things, Council, thank you so much for passing the Behavioral Health Clinician. Thank you, Chief J. Druzyk and your team, I think it's been a great program with the Higera Health embedded social worker. I think this is going to be a great program, I support it 100%. It's kind of weird not having a vote tonight, but I appreciate it so much. The city has received a RAP grant for a camera system project throughout the city for $48,293.81. The project was to upgrade the camera system at the police department. This was to improve the security in the building with newer and updated cameras. This one I'm really excited about. The city was also received SEMCOG TAP funds in the amount of $281,600 to fund the City of Westland Merriman Sidewalk Project. This infrastructure project is a quarter-mile sidewalk along the east side of Merriman Road and west side of Hawthorne Drive, so it's really going to connect walkable, bikeable for folks in that area to Heinz Park, which is what we've all been asking for. Reminder, February is Black History Month. Stay tuned to all of our social networks, social media accounts and all, along with W O N D. There's a lot in our website, citywestland.com, for the many numerous events we'll have celebrating Black History. Couple other things, I recently observed a water main break process from the beginning to the end. The process is very long and lengthy, I saw it from start to finish, but it was handled very efficiently with our Department of Public Service employees, so I appreciate them for, for having me out there. The Southeast Michigan Construction Academy is creating a permanent location to provide accredited training for several different construction trades right here in Westland. This new location will be at 35600 Central City Parkway, it's right behind City Hall. It'll feature hands-on learning space, work labs, and classrooms. The acquisition of the building was supported with a $3 million grant from the state of Michigan to provide opportunities and meet workforce demands. Actually, I think some of the folks are meeting here tonight, they've been renting out space at City Hall for, for many, many months, and now they're opening up a place right across the street to bring the trades right here in Westland. Mr. Fosso likes that. This week, I'll be joining Mayor Racy from Wayne to deliver dictionaries to third graders at Schweitzer Elementary. And then I want to let you know, we, the library, William P. Foss Public Library will be hosting a coffee hour on Wednesday, February 15th at 9:00 a.m. at the new Marshall location. So Marshall Upper Elementary is the temporary location for the William P. Foss Public Library. I do want to say, great job to everyone involved with the, with moving in this location over. We've had a welcoming response from the neighbors, and I want to thank Jennifer Roth and her team for a great, great job moving over there. Last and not least, I'm looking forward to our upcoming discussions on diversity, equity, and inclusion. We're doing a conversation series. The first one's going to take place on Tuesday, February 21st at 10:00 a.m. right here at City Hall. There will be a three-person team from the DEI Department of Franklin County, Ohio, which will partner with our DEI Director, Pascal Eze, and they will share their experiences in fostering DEI in community like ours. The mission is free, and everyone is welcome to attend. As I stated with my initiatives, we're going to use every resource we have. I know council's going to have a lot of questions, I know the residents are going to have a lot of questions. You're going to hear a lot more, I mean, a lot more about all these initiatives. So we welcome the public, public input, we welcome and encourage council participation, and I encourage anyone else that has any questions or feedback to contact the mayor's office anytime between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, at 734-467-3200. You can also email us at mayor@cityofwestland.com. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. We now move on to comments from the city attorney.
Thank you, Chair. I do want to make a couple of comments on issues raised by the conditional licensee regarding marijuana. A couple of things, he's absolutely right, the market has changed dramatically since this process started. Certainly, the city has no control over that market forces are, what market forces are. Second, I want to remind Council, remind the public that there was a one-year period, and once the licenses were granted, we did a six-month extension under the ordinance, and indeed, this council last September granted another six-month extension, which expires about, I believe it's March 15th. So there's been a two-year period here, the first year, and then two, two six-month extensions. And finally, while some of the ideas being promoted by the conditional licensees are interesting and maybe even pretty smart and wise in today's marketplace, it is controlled by the ordinance. Mr. Ayub is talking to them and explaining to them, you may have a good idea about what you want to do in today's marketplace, but administration is limited by the ordinances that council adopts. So he can't make decisions that just sound good. I think that's frustrating for some of the licensees. But again, it starts with a market condition we don't control, and an ordinance that sets forth a structure. And then I would say we're still in litigation with those who didn't receive conditional licenses at the time. We're up on appeal on that, we've been successful at the trial court and a couple of attempts to stay proceedings, which we were, the city was successful in. So every step has to be thought about, not only in terms of the conditional licensees, but the views of those who claim they were mistreated, and how we will treat them on a going-forward basis. Unfortunately, the council's going to have to deal with this again in the future, but the, the... the, the current horizon shows an extension, that extension period expiring if they haven't done certain things in mid-March. So I'm sure we'll be talking about it in March. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to move on to comments from our council members, starting with Councilman Godbout.
Thanks. A couple of things. First, I want to congratulate Brandon and Lucas for their receiving the Compassionate City Award. I, I know Lucas personally. He's an outstanding young man, and, you know, it's, it's nice to see that, you know, we recognize those kids for their, for being compassionate. I also wanted to, once again, remind students that the Westland Community Foundation Scholarship process, application process is open now through March 17th, and they're available to any Westland resident regardless of what high school they go to, as long as they're a resident of Westland. For more information on that, you can call 734-495-1200. And then, you know, I was, I was going to wait until the budget amendment came up. There was some talk earlier about the study session, and, but the mayor decided to talk about some of the, the items in his five-point initiative, and, you know, it's, it's very frustrating. I've been asking for two years that council have a study session on the ARPA funding, and we have yet to have a council-led discussion on appropriation of the ARPA funding. And, and as part of this budget process now, we want to take $5 million of the ARPA funding and move it into general fund under lost revenue, and I pointed this out during the study session. But the fact of the matter is, the city's not, doesn't have lost revenue, but the ARPA rules allow you to do that. So some of the, the items in, in the mayor's five-point plan, while very energetic, you know, again, there's been no discussion with the council on that rollout, how we're going to pay and where the money's coming from for some of these projects. You know, if the city were to buy them all, it then becomes city property, takes it off the tax rolls, which is one of the largest revenue sources for tax revenue in the city. So there's, there's lots of questions that we have, or that at least I have as a, as a council member, that need to be explained before we just say, we're going to do all of this. You know, money for free sidewalks out in the community. You know, it's, it's great talking points, but again, without any discussion from council or any input from council, it's, it's very frustrating, particularly when we've been asking, or I at least have been asking, for, like I said, two years since the ARPA funds were allocated, that we have some input. You know, we talked about, he's talking about a rec center on Ford Road potentially, but we couldn't make it work. That's why the Y pulled out of Marshall. So, and, again, it's just, it's very frustrating for the lack of action this body, as a council, has taken over the past two years on this subject, as well as the, the staffing level discussion that I've asked for, for several years as well, that has never occurred. But council president and Pro Tem are the ones that schedule study sessions. So we're, we're sitting here, and again, we had nothing on the agenda this evening with that reallocation of the funds because Councilman Hart wasn't here, so that didn't get put on the agenda. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll now move on to Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, and a nice job running the meeting tonight. I thought you were very respectful to everybody that came up, even if some things were a little bit out of order, and as it was said before, it was nice to see a new person in that seat, so, so good job. Regarding the comments made by Councilman Godbout, I have to agree with a lot of that sentiment. It was disappointing that council didn't get a strong say in how these ARPA funds were going to be used, and I do hope that, you know, moving forward now, we can kind of clear some of this up, but at this point, it doesn't seem like it. Other than that, I want to thank Director Brown for bringing forward the Code Red, replacing NICSIL. That's something we were asking for, for a couple of years, I think almost every council member. We were just looking for a better way to notify residents when there's a water main break or any other sort of safety issue in the neighborhood. There's really not an easy way to reach everybody, but if we can get people signed up for this, if something happens at 2:00 in the morning or 5:00 in the morning, we can get that message out. It's going to be a lot more transparent. People are going to feel a lot more safer, so thank you for bringing that one forward. The only other thing I have is, at the last study session, we talked about what was spent at Marshall, and I see that finance, the finance team already left. But I think even before that meeting, council members were asking how much was spent on Marshall, and it sounded like, you know, at least the half a million dollar grant that we got from the state, but it sounded like it could have been closer to a million dollars. So we were told we were going to get the invoices and basically a breakdown of what was spent before these budget amendments came up. So through the chair of the administration, if we can, when can we expect to, to get those numbers? And then that, that'll be it for me tonight. I'll, I'll close out my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, do you have a response about the timeline?
Councilman, we can get back within the next couple of days and get that to you.
Okay. And we'll now move on to Councilman Mike McDermott.
Well, good evening, and thank you, Councilwoman Pro Tem, for running a great meeting. I know it's not easy to step in and do this for the first time, but you ran a wonderful and very professional meeting, so thank you for your work at tonight's meeting. Lots of things to say tonight. Congratulations to Brandon and Lucas on their compassionate acts here in the city of Westland. It's always nice to honor the students here in Westland for what they do and, and really the example that they set by being compassionate human beings, and sometimes by being better than us too. So thank you for Brandon and Lucas for your compassionate acts. Thank you to our Westland Fire Department for coming up and spotlighting all the charitable work they do throughout the year. I would encourage you all to go to the Westland Fire and Rescue Facebook page and take a look. They did a Facebook post about two weeks back now. I shared it on my council page, Councilman Mike McDermott, but they shared it on the Westland Fire and Rescue page, their run volume here in the city of Westland, and just how much it has increased over the last year, and you can really get a perspective on how hard they're really working and how many runs they're really going on. And if you look at that run volume and you juxtapose it to 10 years ago, you compare it to 10 years ago, it has more than doubled. And so we really, I say that not only to say how much we really appreciate the work that our fire department is doing, but really how critical this staffing study session that all of us have been calling for, to look at fire department staffing and the, the critical level that we're at here, how important that study session is going to be. And I think more than ever now, we've taken care of the police department staffing level, at least temporarily, with the letter of understanding that was passed and adopted by council. Now it's time to take a look at the fire department, looking at their, their pay, their benefits, taking a look at, you know, the, the wage scale for them, and taking a look at the staffing levels. So I would encourage everybody to go to the Westland Fire and Rescue Facebook page and just take a look at just how busy your fire department is here in the community and how hard they're really working. On another note with public safety, we passed here tonight the new social worker that we're going to be hiring. Again, thank you to Chief Jed Ruzick. Thank you to everyone in the Westland Police Department who was really being proactive on this measure and getting another social worker here in the city of Westland. We know that substance abuse is not a criminal issue for the courts, but is a public health crisis that we face. And with Big Pharma pushing opioids on the community, we know that now more than ever, we're at critical mass when it comes to the opioid crisis that we face here in Westland, in Michigan, and across the country. And so as a part of that litigation that the city was joined in, I'm really excited to see that we're getting a substance use disorder counselor, social worker here in the city to work on that. That's going to be critically important for people in our community and for, you know, marginalized individuals who are often forgotten about because they have a substance abuse and addiction problem. So I'm really excited to see that we're treating that like the public health crisis that it is, and not like the criminal problem that it should have never been treated like over the years. I want to thank the Westland Police Department for putting a statement out regarding the Tyree Nichols thing. They echoed the sentiments that the Michigan Association of Chiefs had put out, and we all know that what an important situation that was, the, the brutal beating of Tyree Nichols. And I want to thank our police department for putting out a statement on that as well and standing against what happened in Memphis. I'm excited about some of the initiatives that were, you know, announced in Marylando's five-point plan. Leaf pickup is always exciting, but the, you know, $5 million question is, how are we going to pay for these things? What are we, where's the money going to be allocated from, and what is council's role in all this? So I'm really excited about some of these initiatives that we're hearing about, but having council involvement in this will be critical and key. I want to echo Councilman Godbout's sentiments about the ARPA study session. We'd had one study session way back when to talk about, you know, how we might want to allocate the ARPA money, but since then, we haven't had a single conversation about the money actually being allocated. And, you know, that predates this administration. That goes back to last year, and it would be nice to get the ball rolling to have another study session on the ARPA funds and how we want to spend the remaining ARPA allocation of your ARPA tax dollars, because there's still quite a bit of it out there to, to be allocated, and we're the legislative body of the city, and it'd be nice to act like it. So I hope we have a, a study session on that. I want to thank Director Brown. As Councilman Hersberg said, the transition from NICSIL to Code Red has been something that I think all of us up here have been talking about, advocating for, so really excited about that. I know there's a lot of work going into that now and over the next six months to a year, so thank you for all the work that you're doing now, and thank you for all the work that you and your team will be doing as we make that important switch. It is Black History Month, and I want to invite everybody to go to my council page at Councilman Mike McDermott. I will be highlighting important figures in the Black and African-American community, and also really trying to highlight people beyond just the, you know, typical people that politicians like to talk about in terms of Dr. King, or Rosa Parks, or Malcolm X, people that you've heard about and studied in school. There are so many more people that are, you know, culturally important to the fabric of the United States, to the fabric of the state of Michigan and our community here in Westland that deserve to be spotlighted, that have, you know, given us tremendous accomplishments, whether it is technological, scientific, culturally, educationally, in, in sports and entertainment that deserve to be highlighted. So on my page at Councilman Mike McDermott, I'm going to be highlighting that as well throughout the month. Just a few more things, just a congratulations to State Representative Coleman, mentioned this, but to Bishop Shelby over there at the Burning Bush Church on his presidential recognition. I want to thank Councilman Godbout, State Representative Coleman, on really going after DTE to get some tree trimming done down in Precinct 28 in the southeast end. DTE likes to talk a lot and act less. They like to run their commercials on TV about all the tree trimming and initiatives that they're doing in southeast Michigan, but unfortunately, we have a lot of residents throughout the city that don't see any action from DTE and don't see trees getting trimmed, and often end up with power outages here in the community. So thank you for your work on that, to Rep. Coleman, and to Councilman Godbout for sitting down and advocating on that. Just congratulations again to Marylando. I hope those first two weeks in the, the seat are going well for you, and, you know, really excited to hit the ground running and work with you and your administration on some of the initiatives that you've proposed and some of the things that we all on council want to do. With that, I think I have covered almost everything in my 10-minute diatribe here, so I appreciate you all having patience with me, and I appreciate my new colleague, Councilman Hornbacher, for willing to go after me. So thank you for sacrificing on that one too. It means a lot, because I'm, I'm long-winded. But with that, if you ever need to get in touch with me, 734-890-2146. You can call or text me anytime, or as I've mentioned a couple of times tonight, on Facebook at Councilman Mike McDermott. And as always, have a good evening and treat each other with kindness and respect. A note that we always pick up from our friend Ray Schuels.
Thank you. We'll now move on to Councilwoman Sampe.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So good evening. I hope everyone's doing well. It has been three weeks since we met. It's actually has gone by pretty fast. So today marks the sixth day of Black History Month and American Heart Month, two very, very, very important observances. I just want to share a fun fact. So I know that Councilman McDermott mentioned this about, you know, honoring those that maybe are non-traditional. So Daniel Hale Williams, we're going to talk about him for a second. He was a Black, performed one of the first successful open-heart surgeries in 1893. Williams established his own practice, but he had to perform care, including surgeries. He actually performed them on patients in their homes. His hospitals largely did not allow Black doctors to practice in their facilities, and he went on to found the first Black-owned hospital. So little trivia, did you know fact, so. I wanted to give some congratulations to the students, Brandon and Lucas. It is so great to see the Compassionate City continuing and honoring those students. To the fire department, thank you for having me this past weekend. I spent a large chunk of my Saturday at the fire department, and you guys are very busy. So I was trying to meet with Dave Polite, and we couldn't even meet because they were on runs. So I had a chance to look at their large screen. It showed where they were at, when they got calls, very sophisticated, and I look forward to continuing conversations with you guys, but I just wanted to thank you again for allowing me to sit in and just kind of observe your day-to-day, which is, which is so busy, very, very busy. I know we'll continue conversations too. I also wanted to say happy belated birthday to Councilman McDermott. You just celebrated your birthday. And Lori to your mom. Hopefully, you know, you had a great birthday, and that your mom has a great birthday as well. Just a few things, as, as we talked, a few of my colleagues talked about the ARPA session, the study session that we had on the 23rd. I, I do agree, I think that, you know, we, we would love to continue on the conversations. There's been a lot of, a lot of conversations internal, people have come up with different ideas and such. I know personally, I would love additional lighting throughout the city, so it's not just one area, it's throughout the city in general. I feel like there's a lot of areas that are not well-lit. I know that we talked about road paving. I mean, we're looking at things that our residents want, and I think the conversation needs to continue, and we need to discuss this. So thank you for, you know, those that brought it up, and I know that Mayor Londo has, has kind of rolled out some things too that are going to accomplish some of our, our major wins or major goals. For the expansion, I know this was mentioned by Mayor Londo, the expansion of kind of our Parks and Rec. I don't think that this is a new rec building. I, I think that there's been a possibility of finding a business that would come here in Westland. Doesn't have to be a center. Could be something like a sports facility, a training facility, a facility that allows for kind of recreation, but also for people to work out as well too, or do some training, whatever it is. I, I think there's a lot of different ideas, a lot of different things. I think there's a lot of different speculations, so I look forward when Council President Hart comes back that we continue the conversation, but just wanted to kind of throw those ideas out there as well. Michigan weather has never ceased to disappoint us, especially in January, right? I wanted to give a shout out to our amazing DPS team. They have been all over it. They've been very busy on top of the roads and salting and plowing, and then also over the weekend with the water main break. So if you see them out and about, I know that some of them worked 17 hours from Saturday to Sunday, just to make sure that they had it taken care of, and they're always on top of it. So I wanted to just give you a public thank you to our amazing DPS department, and I know if you see them out in the community, maybe say hi or tip your hat or buy them a coffee. And then the libraries, so there's been questions, I've gotten some inbox questions about the library, if there's, the library is operating, is it open? I know it was temporarily located, so it is open, so it's resuming their full services at Marshall Elementary, and that is at 35100 Bayview Street. Effective February 1st, they were in that location, and the entrance and parking, parking are at the rear of the building, so if you are interested in, in going to that kind of temporary location, feel free to go there. I just wanted to wrap up and thank Mayor Londo and your staff for being pretty easy and attentive to work with. I've asked a lot of questions. I actually had a, a resident reach out to me, and on Ann Arbor Trail, and like near Heinz Drive, there's the Naked Bar. I don't know if anyone remembers that. So it's been abandoned for quite some time. There's been some... There's been some gunshots that have gone off and graffiti. It's, it's actually pretty scary. So, I have been asking about it for quite some time. Residents have, have reached out to me for security issues. And we are moving and working with the attorney, and I've brought that up many, many, many times, with the attorney to possibly have some further action at that location. So, we're, we're tackling blight. I've been bringing up any type of issues with the administration recently, and they've been very attentive. So, I just want to thank you very much for, for jumping all over that, because again, there's a lot of people that have reached out, and you guys are all over it. So, thank you. So, our next meeting will be February 21st at 7:00. We always invite residents to come out. Again, whether it's a meeting or study session, we love having faces out there and keeping us on our toes. Until then, be safe and kind. Everyone have a great Valentine's Day, because that's right around the corner as well. If you need to reach me, my personal Facebook is Councilwoman Melissa Sampe, and my phone number is 734-637-2078. Everyone have a safe night.
Thank you. And now, we will hear from Councilman Hornbuckle.
After those two, I gotta take some water.
We'll put the timer on.
All right. First, I just want to thank the city administration for the onboarding process, and welcoming me with open arms and helping me get more acclimated with the city and things going on here. To Brandon and Lucas, congratulations. Thank you to both state reps. Nice meeting you. I'm in the same boat. It's all new for me, and gotta remember my phone number as well. So, thank you for being here, and nice meeting you, and look forward to working with both of you guys in the city. Definitely want to give a, a big shout-out to DPS for quickly and safely cleaning the streets. That was, you know, very good and well-organized. Good to be able to take the kids to school and don't have to worry about someone sliding into you. So, thank you, DPS. Also, thank you to DPS for the water main break, getting that resolved very quickly, as quickly as possibly, as human as possible. So, thank you for that. To the mayor, thank you for update on, on things going around the city. Thank you for your ideas and vision for the city going forward. For the study session, I do agree with some of the things that was pointed out, making sure residents are aware, and make sure residents have some type of input and know what's going on in the, the city. And those study sessions are very important for everyone, not just us, but the city as well. So, I would like to work with the council to find a way to make sure we get the word out to the citizens as well. I have a couple of events that I want to highlight. The Relay for Life, it was mentioned earlier, but I want to make sure that this great event that you attend, it'll be Thursday, February 9th at 6:30, right here at City Hall. And also, the Red Cross Blood Drive, it'll be here, at City Hall on Monday, February 13th, in the Grand Ballroom, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00. Just go to redcrossblood.org to sign up if you would like to donate. Also, because I'm gonna keep it short, after, you know, you, you go to your Relay for Life, you help a life by donating some blood, think about going to the Mike Modano Ice Arena with your family, spending some time with your family. They have open skating on Fridays from 8:00 p.m. to 9:20, and also Sunday from 1:30 to 9:50, to 2:50. Took my girls there, and it was definitely amazing, a great place to see, and, you know, a bunch of kids running, skating around, can't say running around. But it was definitely a great place to take your family if you had nothing else to do for an hour and a half. Also, I didn't hear anyone talk about the new car wash. Man, that was amazing, amazing new car wash. I, I see a lot more clean cars on the street, around the building. So, really great. If you haven't been, go ahead and check it out. I believe you can get a couple of free car washes for the next month. So, go check out them. Also, from them, they, they really like the city. They like what we do in the city, and they're glad to be in the city. I also want to highlight another business that echoes the same things about the city. And they've been a business of ours for two years, and they're still giving Westland praises, called K9 Safety. They, they train dogs in our facility there at 920 Wayne Road. Great facility, great family there. If you haven't took your dog to any training, I would go there. And they echo how they love being in the city. The city treats them very well, and they like the people in the city. And like I said, I'm gonna keep it short. And thank you for coming, everyone. Have a nice day.
Thank you. All right. So, now I know how President Hart and former Pro Tem Lando felt. So, good evening. I would like to begin by thanking Councilwoman Sampe in leading us in the pledge. I would like to recognize our outstanding students, once again, Brandon and Lucas. Our children are our greatest asset, and I'm overjoyed to see how compassionate and kind our students are. And I know they're just two out of the very many that just do amazing things, and who will all grow up to be amazing humans. As we, you know, thank you to the fire department for outlining all of the activities they do outside of just traditional fire service and EMS rescue. And while we're speaking about our children, and we've got great news that that young woman will be leaving the hospital in a few short days, I think it's important, even though they don't necessarily want or need the recognition, but I would like to point out that Captain Scott Busek, who is with us this evening, he's right there, was the man who saved her life. So... And I understand how you guys feel, but you know what? Tough. It is Black History Month, and I was excited as part of the National, or Nakan Transit Commission, that we recognize National Transit Equity Day, which also aligns with Rosa Parks' birthday. And we were able to offer on Friday, February 3rd, free fares to our passengers. I thought that was an exceptional activity that the Transit Authority put on. And I hope in the future that we can expand on that endeavor. Other than the, oh, excuse me. So, in regards to our social worker, or adding to another substance abuse therapist to the police department, I think it's a wonderful use of the opioid litigation funds. The opioid epidemic is tragic. It touches so many lives. I don't think that there's a family that hasn't been affected by it on some level. And, you know, I think what the chief said, with the moment of clarity, was so, you know, that's when you can reach someone. That's, and having that service available right at that moment is going to be critical. So, thank you, Chief Jed Ruzick, and the rest of our police department for making that a reality. I echo the sentiments of my colleagues, and as having a new council leadership seat as Pro Tem, I will take forward my notes from today's meeting and present them to President Hart. And I will be advocating for further study sessions for our ARPA allocations. You know, part of the, you know, yes, there's a treasury equation that allows us to capture ARPA dollars. However, to Councilman Godbout's point, we don't, we didn't have a revenue deficit, but we did have to allocate those dollars so that they weren't taken back, because communities are starting to experience, or at least that's what the sentiment has been, is communities are starting to experience those dollars being taken back. So, we need to do something with those $5 million, right? And we need to have more input. We did have one charrette, and I think it was a good start, but by no means was it comprehensive. And additionally, I would just like to thank all of our presenters, my colleagues, all of you in attendance tonight for a professional meeting. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you.